Okay, both of you need to order and please try for the.
The United States of America and to the Republic of Japan. One nation on her ground, invisible, liberated, and justice for all.
Okay, we have an audience of citizens on the counter. Does anybody have any questions or concern? Yes, sir.
Such as? I was looking at the, um, first of all, the budgets. They have these budgets. They go from June to June, right? Is that what the? Hey, what's the dates?
June, uh, July 30th to June 30th, right?
July 1st?
June 30th.
Okay. Um, I was looking at. Under the Recreation Department. Um, of, of last month for the two days, it was 10/31/2025. We got this at the Board of Selectment meeting. Um, under recreational programs. The year-to-date spending says eighteen thousand one hundred and sixty-nine. But under this month's, which is date ending 11/30. Recreation program says ten thousand two hundred and five, so it was like. It went down many thousands dollars now? Spending. What, where does, where does that come from?
Do you see it?
No, I don't see it.
What, what document?
I'll show you.
You got something you got in the paper?
No, I got this at the Board of Selectment meeting. Well, I got this, just bring it out for. It'll be yours.
Budget, actual fiscal year. Uh, I don't have that.
They don't have that now?
Please don't, okay.
This is what you were talking about.
Well, it's the same thing. So if you look under the Recreation Program, it says eighteen thousand one hundred and sixty-nine dollars. Spent over here in the Recreation Department. If you look under this month, this is ending 10/11. This one ending the spending 11/30. The same. Breakout is two thousand two hundred and five. So this is just this.
Uh, you know, I really don't know what he expended during that month of.
Well, it looked like he spent eight thousand dollars less. Than last in the month before. I don't know how you do that. I don't know what the.
What, I want to pay his bills, you know, I don't know. I have that, I have that schedule. And then, and if you can. You know, give me something to look at here. Uh, I will ask.
It just looks like there's something definitely wrong.
You mean he spent less in the name of months?
It looks like they've got money back. It says he spent eighteen thousand dollars as of 10/11. It's saying he spent only ten thousand dollars as of 11/30. Eight thousand dollar difference.
In one day in your month.
But, but. If you spent eighteen thousand dollars already, you can spend ten thousand. Eight thousand, I don't know, you can only go up.
The expenditure shouldn't be going up.
Correct. What's that, got money back somehow?
Yeah. What's the number?
He does, does make income on the.
He didn't have money back, the sum is still not going to go down. If you spend eighteen thousand dollars, you're gonna spend more. You can spend more.
What's the bottom line for that category?
Yeah, I know.
Way down here?
No, no, below, it's under Recreation. Way down.
That's not the bottom.
Then here's a.
There you go. That's the last one?
Yes, that's 10/31.
Yeah.
Look at. And then, and then there. Ninety-seven, Tuesday, Monday? So nine. It's nine one seven fifty. Can I ask Sarah that? This is nine. Nine one. I, I don't know that the day-to-day.
Now, does this have anything to do with the? Calculations he was trying to complete?
I frankly don't know. I, I feel best bet is to go read the several of that one. And, and I did say, at least at some point.
Right.
I don't even know, that would be speculation. I just don't know.
Can you, um, can you? Send me an email with the question that you're having right now? And use the dates you can talk about at this day with this month. This day with this much. Why the difference? So that I can have some question, Sarah, about, and I won't forget.
Right. I remember.
Yeah, we can just say, um, the. B, BOF Chair, I mean, we have a chairman who's, um. Heing on the desk now, so. I'll get it and I'll order Sarah. You Sarah can work it out and get it back to you. Right? I really don't understand what, what the situation is.
What's the fully thing like this one?
For Finance?
BOF Chair.
BOF Chair at Sterling CT.
CT WS.
WS.
I post.
Yes.
Second topic. I know that. So. Just my input is this transfer that wants to be made to the capital account. You know, we've been discussing it on and off throughout the past several months. And I still look at a budget of almost two hundred thousand dollars. Projected revenue. And then this actual, what we're calling extra, when it's not really extra. It's, um. Over and above the expected revenue. Correct?
Surplus.
Surplus. Which, if you round up to thirty thousand. He has a budget of, or the Rec Department had, I won't say he. The Rec Department has a budget of two hundred and thirty thousand then. And right now, according to these. These line items, it looks like the programs are running short, the part-time pay is running short. So why are we considering taking the twenty-nine thousand? Putting it into a capital account for something like improvements in the Rec Department? And to expand on that, there are state grants available for a lot of the things that the Rec Department would like to improve on. That wouldn't, you know, impact your budget. And I don't know why these things aren't getting looked at. Because, you know, we are a small town. I think it's a very large budget for, for our department within the town and there's. It is bringing in revenue, but there's also ways to offset it with grants. And maybe even generate more revenue before we think about spending.
When?
That's just my thought.
As we, as we discussed a couple meetings ago. We had determined that the day-to-day operations of the. Rec Department really are under the purview of the Board of Selectment. So in the, in the grand scheme of things, if you come to ask us. The Board of Selectment comes to the Board of Finance and says, we need to increase. The amount we're going to give to the Rec Department for the next year's budget. And, um. You know, they have to rationalize that. But so far, we haven't had any official requests to do anything about next year's budget because, yeah, that I know, it hasn't been prepared. Is that? Not ready yet, so. You're.
Right. Yeah.
Were we talking about last year's budget?
We're talking about the current budget, which is almost two hundred thousand dollars. I'm rounding up for convenience sake.
Okay, the current, this, this.
Yes.
All right.
And then we're taking the over and above the projected revenue. Calling it extra and putting it into a capital account for the Rec Department, that's twenty-nine thousand. So rounding up.
Thirty, you're talking about tonight's minutes?
Yes.
I mean, tonight's agenda.
Tonight's agenda.
Right.
So technically, you're looking at a two hundred and thirty thousand dollar budget.
Well, I do believe that.
For that department.
That when we get to new business and we get to this. If it's something that has to be rationalized by the Board of Selectment. Then we have one of the, the last standing moment of his career here. He probably has a good way to explain it. We haven't really heard anything about it yet. So I don't have any answers for you.
I'm just asking the Board to consider.
Yeah. Yeah. I, I guess we have to hear multiple sides, so what's going on before we can say, well, yeah, that's a good idea or not? I don't really know.
Yeah.
You know, I'll, I'll calculate.
Do you, well, how, maybe the, the Board of Selectmen can come to this too. How did they arrive at the, um, projected revenue amounts? How do they, how do they do that?
Are we talking just about the Board of?
Yes, on the board, right.
Just about the, the, uh.
Recreation.
Recreation Department.
Right.
Let's, let's, can we, can we? Hold on to that thought till we get to the transfer and the discussion about what's going on.
Sure.
I really don't know.
Okay.
I know. Will we find out? Okay. Couple of tough questions later, um. We have. Uh, on the agenda, the approval of the minutes of October eighth meeting. Does everybody, has everybody have a chance to see those minutes?
Yes.
I did too, and we'll.
I made a motion. Second.
Motion made in second, we checked the minutes of the last meeting, all in favor?
All right.
All right, and opposed? Okay, the motion is made and carried, we were checking the minutes. And. On to unfinished business, which I see nothing really is on the agenda for unfinished business. Unless anybody can think of anything, we've left out. One. New business. And now maybe we'll get some answers here. Request for the, by Board of Selectmen to transfer the Recreation Department's excess amount of twenty-nine thousand eight hundred and seventy-nine dollars. From the general fund. To the Recreation Department capital account. At a special town meeting to be scheduled by the Board of Selectmen. So what you're asking for is to take some money out of the general fund. Correct? And transfer it into the Recreation Department's capital account for a particular purpose. Okay. Um, Lincoln, you give us a little story behind that?
Well, first of all, I don't know how the seventy-five thousand dollar figure was arrived at. Um, it was arrived at with Jason and Sarah. Why wasn't eighty? Why wasn't sixty? I ran. Somewhat based, I guess, on what the previous year brought in for revenue. I put the number seventy-five thousand, I have no idea how they arrived at. Anyways, that was the number that was put into the budget as expected revenue for the Rec Department. They exceeded that by twenty-nine thousand dollars. And, um, that's why Jason felt, oh, we've met our goal of twenty-five thousand seventy-five. And we exceeded it by twenty-nine thousand, and I'd like to take that twenty-nine thousand and put it into a capital account, which they already have.
Mm-hmm.
Um, for.
Issue. Equipment or whatever.
Equipment or whatever they, things in, above and beyond the normal running of the Recreation Department. Um. That money is in the, the reason it's coming from, and should you agree to it. Um, the money's coming from the general fund, because that's where all that money went.
Okay.
That's, that's just, that's where it is. It has, has to go somewhere, so that's where it goes. When, when Jason brought it in, in whatever amounts it came into, that all went to the general fund, so there's. That, that's the reason.
Cause there wasn't any, there was no, to, to, to. Gather the income that they make on certain activities, which put them up over their goal mark. They had no place to put it other than the general.
And that's what, I just want to make that understood, that when you mentioned it came, we're taking it from the general fund, that's how it got there. Because that's the only way it would go to.
Right.
The, again, I don't know how the seventy-five thousand dollar limit was reached, and I have, it's just, because of the activity down there. I say down there because I'm up in this corner, and then down there. Uh, by the activity in the Rec Department with, um. Different rentals they have, the building, the gym gets rented on a regular basis. There's, there's all sorts of income that comes in that way. Anyway, one way or the other, it came to two hundred and four thousand, which is the twenty-nine thousand dollars more than they anticipated.
Right.
They just feel as though that should go there, and just, just be clear. Two months ago, this body agreed that would should happen.
Yep.
Okay?
Yep.
So the, what you're doing basically is giving consent to go to a town meeting with this right at the moment.
To do the transfer because it's larger than twenty. Because the transfer is larger than five thousand dollars, I mean, twenty thousand dollars.
Yes, cause that, but you did agree at the Board of Finance that that's where that money should go. Um, so.
Sarah did explain at that meeting that. They have no idea how much money they want to make.
Right.
But they do kind of average, some, by some experience. The history of what goes on, and they kind of set a goal. We hope they make that, and it probably. You know, maybe it was optimistic, maybe it was pessimistic, but at least they played out the year and made money.
It had, it had to do something. The previous year's revenue had to play into that formula somehow. Exactly how, I don't know, it was nothing that I was involved with, but, um. It was a number they wrote that, and they exceeded it.
Yes, sir.
Do you know what the number is for this year? I'm sorry.
The budget has not been made up yet.
Okay, cause I'm looking at the budget now, it looks. We're only three months in, and it looks like they spent quite a bit on it. I'm wondering how they're going to move forward for the rest of the year. It looks like a lot of, like, a couple of things might even be a little bit over. But.
Those are particular line items, and they might be?
Yeah, it just, it just, it just looks like their goals are ready.
If you look at the October one that I was showing you before, they were already over budget.
Yeah.
So that, that one's different.
Well, we would have to talk to Sarah about how they, see the grand, month to month, things may look bleak. But the whole year is what's budgeted. And say that sometimes they might make, sometimes they have, they expanded, sometimes they may make something. So you have to let it play out in order to know. Yes, sir?
What's the purpose of the fund? I mean, why can't you just go to Selectmen on ID or whatever?
Cause we have no way of giving them any money yet.
Right.
We don't have a source of money.
But don't you just go to the Board and talk to them?
We have, we have to go there, we have to go through that route, but. Now, that's the only way we're able to give them any money would be come.
It's such a small program, I think that would be a proper. I would.
The history of how the program got set up, I don't know much about. I don't know anything about. But if they have a line item in there, is for capital purchases, which they need by equipment. Then it's appropriate if they think they're going to need to buy stuff to put the money in the capital line item column. To buy stuff.
Right. And, uh, who approves spending from that? Was just the, the Rec Department themselves? They, they can just? Or do they have to?
If, if it's over, um, twenty thousand dollars, it has to come through us, actually.
And in a town, in a town meeting, right?
Exactly.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Just like this particular item right here, even to transfer that money, whereas you're taking it from the general fund and. You would be, I'm saying if we're fast, if, or if they agree with. You're taking it from the general fund and you're putting it into a capital account, that obviously has to go to town meeting goal. So anything like that has to go to town meeting, just like two weeks ago, we had, we created a capital fund, right, maybe two weeks ago. Well, the road was circling. And we funded it with money from the fund balance. Or the general fund, either one, it comes to the very same thing, just two different names for the same thing. And that, um, that too, had to go to a town meeting, so. This has to go to a town meeting, but one way or the other. I dare say Sarah can shed some light on, first of all, how they arrived at the seventy-five thousand dollar number. Which was a question that was asked, and these items that apparently are causing concern at the moment. She could certainly shed some light on all that as well.
Sure, until the next time we meet.
Just for verification.
We certainly can have, you can certainly have her here for the next time we meet. You can ask her to come to any meeting.
Right?
So just for verification, a question that, what they were just talking about with the. With the town meeting coming out of the general fund, but the money that's already in the budget, they can spend that out as they see fit, correct? They don't need to go to a town meeting to spend the money that's already.
If it's a line item in their budget, they can go right ahead and spend it. They've been, they've, just like when the library gets a certain amount of money, they can spend it any way they'd like to. As long as it's already in their budget. Should they ever run, if they needed to have more extra money, they have to come to us and we have to, you know, go through this process as well. But if it's in their line item, if it's in their budget, they can spend it as, as they see fit.
So if they need more money, like what this is talking about, another twenty-nine, twenty-nine thousand dollars. Over their, their, their original budget, then they need to go to a town meeting. That's what this.
The only way it has to go to a town meeting, that money, anything extra beyond the budget. Goes into the general fund, where it is right now. For to get it out of that general fund and to go into any account, which in this case would be a capital account. Has to go through this board and then to a town meeting, because removing money from the general fund. Tonight, later on tonight, I'm going to ask for money to do a project over in the. The senior center, the clothing bank, and the other, that will be replace the ceilings and lights, we'll get to that later. But that money has to come from the, the facilities maintenance account. Which is a capital fund. In order to get money from that capital fund, I have to go through them, and then we have to go to a town meeting for that as well.
But I think the question is, the money that you put into this fund is done, anything they use out of that is going to be above the budgeted year. So they're going to go over budget no matter what, they use that.
I don't think, we, we have a different concept of what this is. This is just an additional fund. That they can use. If this money were transferred into this capital account, they could use it as they see fit. It's not, if.
Well, unless it's individual expenditure exceeding like twenty thousand dollars.
The capital account was just there a year without being used at all. Doesn't mean they necessarily have a project in mind to spend it. It's just, if a project were to come along, for instance, the, the talk over the years about. Redoing the baseball field down at the park. And creating a softball field and other things down there. Which would require lighting, those are expensive projects. That kind of a project, I'm not saying that one, but that kind of a project would come out of this capital fund. It's over and above the general running of the Recreation Department.
But it'd be above the budget they had for the year?
Yes.
Okay.
The state has grants specifically for those types of projects where it wouldn't cost money out of the town's budget?
Well, what we need then is somebody to.
Need right of hand.
Right. And, well, and I even being said, like, like just said, wouldn't it be a better idea? To wait until there's an actual legitimate purpose for spending that money? And then discuss giving them extra money? Why are we just dumping thirty grand into their account without any? Controls on it, just giving them free grand? I, I, it seems more logical to me that if they got a legitimate use for it, then we should discuss it. Rather than just give them that money?
So, but when Jason was here, we did make reference, uh, he wanted that money in that account for if they go on bus trips, he could just use.
Isn't that already in our budget?
That's different.
That's a brand offer.
That is, or.
Suddenly, somebody. Runs over a basketball hoop, and they gotta put another pole up and another net all of a sudden. That's capital. They can pull that money out of, they have no idea what's going to break.
Right.
You know, have a media guess.
But don't we already have miscellaneous money for that in their budget?
I don't, I don't know the details of their budget. I really don't.
Well, it's, it's.
But obviously, you have an improved budget plan that includes capital expenditures. They have other, they have employment expenditures, they have materials. And they have capital expenditures for, for hard items like computers or, you know, tools or mechanical stuff that they need.
So at the end of the year, you put this money in this account. They're gonna, the Rec Department's gonna show that they're over thirty thousand over budget?
I don't know.
Not, not the way I conceive it, but I could be wrong.
I mean, they're likely to spend it on some.
We have, the town has capital accounts.
I didn't even know that.
It rolls over to the next year.
Yeah.
Or it stays in the capital account.
It wouldn't make that.
It would be part of the budget.
We're just trying to understand, like.
I know, and I'm trying to get you.
I know.
Um, the town has several capital accounts.
Okay.
Okay, buses, re-evaluation, equipment, um, this one I just mentioned a moment ago. The, the facilities improvement account, um, one or two others, IT. Those are capital accounts, and now we have the one we just created, which is the one for roads.
Specifically for roads.
Okay, that's specific. The difference with the capital account is the fact that all you can use it for is what that title indicates. We all agree on that. Now. At the end of our budget cycle in June 30th this year. Those are not taken into account as far as budgets concerned. Those are over and above the budget, so our budget is three million dollars, we'll say. That we hope to, we hope to contain the spending for the full year to that number. But that is no barrier at all on the, on the capital accounts. This is totally separate. In this case, the Recreation Capital Account will be totally separate from their budget. That's my concept, this is how it will be due. It's just like the town's budget and the town's capital account. He, they have a budget and that'll be a capital account for them.
But they can still spend that money.
They can spend it, right, on something. And intended to.
Wait, that move all of a sudden?
Over and above the, um, normal running of the department.
And that would be without the approval of the Selectmen's office?
But they can spend that money.
No, they would have to get the approval of the Board of Selectmen.
Even if it's five thousand? Cause that's, even if it's like below the twenty?
Yeah, if they, if they had twenty, this is that, they said, I, I don't know what's in that account now, let's say there's nothing. And you put this twenty-nine thousand, that means they have a, they have a, um, capital account of twenty-nine thousand some change. They would have to come to the Board of Finance, the Board of Selectmen, to say, we need fifteen thousand dollars for this additional project. Can we, or can we not do it?
Oh.
So, and we'd be, it wouldn't be without any oversight. It's just that, just like.
The way it sounded like it was gonna happen.
I know, I think that's, I think it's a misconception, yeah, I really do. And I, if they wanted to use all twenty-nine thousand, then. Then we'd have, we'd have to grant it, but, I'm saying, can't say we, anymore for the next couple days. The new Board of Selectmen would have, Patty and Virgil of, of departments would say either yes or no, but if they said yes, the first thing it's gonna do is go right to them. Because it's over twenty thousand dollars. If they want to spend ten, it would be up to the Board of Selectmen to have that authority.
One, one more question.
Sure.
So there's a pre-existing Rec Department capital account. We don't know what's in it?
Capital. I don't know what's in it, but the, um.
So we're gonna add twenty-nine thousand to potentially a zero account or one that maybe has fifty grand in it?
I, it, it could, but I think it's highly unlikely, but I, I just don't know. I frankly don't know. In fact, I didn't even know that there was an existing capital account with the Rec Department until we, until we looked into it. Cause we were going to create one, remember? We were going to create a capital account, and all of a sudden we found out we don't need to, there's already one there. It's a matter of adding it.
These are things you should know.
I have one more question.
Sorry.
Do these departments, not just the Rec Department, but the Rec Department who go there. Do they keep detailed ledgers on what there's, and then there's.
Yes.
If there's detailed ledgers with line items.
Yes.
Is that available to the public? Can we look at those letters?
Yes, there's public information, and if you want an explanation of what's going on. Then, you know, put a request to the Board of Finance for a explanation, and I will talk to Sarah. She'll come, have her come in and explain what's going on, rather than, um. You know, I think we, we, we are in the throes of developing some policies and procedures to how to handle these kinds of questions. And that's what next month's meeting, maybe the following month's meeting, we'll be addressing. Because we have had some things in the past where it's been very confusing and people want to know the answers. And to be quite honest with you, this little roll of volunteers here does not know every line item of every budget in every department. And we can't get into the weeds that deep every single month. We only meet once a month.
Right.
We're not here every day. But if the question needs an answer, we can find the person who makes the decisions about that and talks to you about the answer. So we can't go much further with it tonight, but if you'd like to address a question, please send me an email or.
I, I, I appreciate it. You're expert, I know you don't know all the details, but I, I do appreciate it.
If I, if I did, I'd have wings, John.
Well, we're trying to get you. At least a paying job.
Could I make a motion that we table this until our next meeting, until we talk to Sarah about the discrepancies from October to November and also the other thing? The, I thought about this account as well, like this.
Let's just, let's table, table it till we can get, um.
The answers?
I don't know now whether Sarah can come to the meeting, so I want to make sure that we, we, we're fair to her. So just, let's, let's table it till we can get a process for, give me the answer, how about that? And maybe January is meeting, I won't. Between a meeting, but I will let you know when we do. Okay? So, what, uh, what do we table anyway? Just a question?
Moving the money.
Oh, no, I don't think they can move the money. We can explain it, but. Did, did you want to?
Well, we have an existing account already that, we don't even know what's in there. So if.
Well, my, my, my argument with that is it's the Board, the Board of Selectmen has approved this action. They're the ones that are in charge of the, the Rec Department, way off. We not only approved it, but you did too. We did before.
But we just found, but I, we just learned right now that there's a already existing capital account. And we don't even know what's in it.
But I don't understand the difference that would make, no.
Well, because if there was already thirty thousand in there, why would we?
Cause we don't, we don't sit in judgment of all what they need. Cause we don't know the big picture of what Jason and the Board of Selectmen are planning or doing. We have relinquished a lot of the management of that, except for the transfer of funds.
Okay, well, well, um, my only concern was I noticed that the budget here looks a little bit. It, it, it just seems like we're already, we're only three months in it, we're pretty far into it. So I was concerned if we did use that money, wouldn't it be more likely to put it towards the budget?
We can't make that kind of decision.
For the, we can't do that for the right.
We're not in charge of the Rec Department's day-to-day.
So like, for, for, for. Tracy, if, if those line items were overrun. This money that's in question, this twenty-nine thousand dollars. We wouldn't have authority, nobody would have authority to just put that into a line item. That chain, that, that would be reconciled at the June 30th.
End of the year.
And it, cause several, it's very possible that any one of those items in the, in the, in the budget could overrun. Yeah, some do. Uh, some. Uh, some come in under. So that transfer of funds, which you, you've done before, you folks have to approve all of that. But the treasurer just works, I, I refer to it as borrowing computer to pay ball, because you have some that are over and some that are under. And she does the reconciling, so they all come out supposedly in the, you know, and they all make.
They work every year.
This would be the same thing.
We, we get a list of.
A list of transfers.
Transfers that Sarah provides, that they have, she has come to, through the audit and through the examination of a whole budget. Recognizes it's, like you say, some, some light items are under, some are over. So that we approve the transfers from the ones that are over to the ones that are deficit, so that the budget can rebalance itself.
Okay, sorry.
Those, those line, those line items that appear to be in trouble right now will be reconciled at, after June thirtieth with that, in that method, okay? Because they only, maybe other line items in that record count, it will be under, so that can be balanced out. The best example I can give you of that, and I'm not trying to oversimplify this, but last year, in the snowplow, snow, um, one, one, we'll give it. We put in a hundred thousand dollars for contractors, those snowplow drivers that go around in our, over your mailbox, those, we had a hundred, a hundred thousand dollars to pay them. We have a salt account, we have to buy salt and we have to buy sand. And because we had a winter with very little sand, or very, not a lot of snow, but a lot of ice. We went through a lot of, um, material in terms of salt and sand. Those two line items went over budget, probably by three or four thousand dollars apiece. The other, the other line item of the contractors was under. We would spend about fifty thousand. So here's fifty thousand that you, you budgeted, but didn't get spent, so you take that to balance off the other two that went over a little bit. And that's exactly what will happen here.
Okay, do they do that amongst the departments too?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
So, but, just so you understand, so everybody understands, this is not something that somebody arbitrarily does without approval. It has to come to the board of finance. We look at what they're doing, where their changes are being made. And if it seems to make sense, we, we agree. If it's something that looks literally radical, we question it. And at that time, the questions are answered about why the money is being moved here or there.
If the, you folks as a warden, I'm not trying to tell you what you can do, but I can tell you right off the bat, that if any one of those line items in June. Is overspent by an excessive amount of money, you would have every right to go back to that department and say, why?
Absolutely.
Okay.
I don't care if it's the, I don't care if it's the tax collector, the, the.
Or, or, or the, or the rec department.
Or any department of any kind. You have every right to question why. It's just that, we, so nobody can transfer those monies until the end of the fiscal year, that's all.
But we, we, we would be totally driven insane if we had to dizzle around with that month to month, you know, for every department.
The meeting could last three hours.
Yeah, right. And, and, and everybody would just be totally confused, because we have to leave it kind of to the professionals who sits in the treasurer's seat. To sort it all out and then give us some suggestions about how to balance at the end of the year.
Is that why that number changes every month, like they were asking eighteen to the ten, because you're moving money, moving money, so that number will change?
What numbers are in it?
The, the spending, you know, the expenses, that the next month it was only ten dollars?
I haven't seen those numbers, so I'm not exactly sure.
Isn't that what you just found?
Yeah, they still, uh, well, it said year-to-date as of ten thirty-one, they spent over eighteen thousand.
Then the next month.
And then year-to-date, uh, uh, a month later, it was only ten.
It could be, yeah, it could be that their expenses are not the same for each month, that the money.
No, year-to-date.
But the money is not getting moved. It's just that, it's a matter of what, what, that they know what they're budgeting for, and they have a certain amount of money they spend every, every month. I, I don't know how that works, right? I just know that.
That's, that's a question.
Nobody can move money into those line items until the third year of the year.
Wouldn't it be beneficial to have this town treasurer at?
She usually is here.
Yeah, she's.
So what, what, when, there was.
She was not able to be here.
Specific question, if, she, if she's not, if she's able to be here, but sometimes she plays a particular role in a particular agenda item. If, it, it's just not, you know, a question from the audience, we can't expect her to just be here every single time, so.
Tracy, that, um, I don't mean to interrupt, but it just, Sarah's job as, as the treasurer. Is to make those transfers at the end of the year.
Mm-hmm.
Basically, all she does is make suggested transfers and brings them to you. And you either agree with them, as Bob said, or you don't agree with them. You have every right to question those transfers. And again, if there's a line item that goes over budget, and you said, wait a minute, there's, there's gotta be a reason for this. You have the right to ask that question.
And we have, uh, in the past, in a lot of times, oh, we had more legal problems that we expected, we have legal budget that under. So we had to take it from here and, uh.
But there's nothing to change.
They have, they, they found one, they had to bury in the graveyard account, you know, those.
Those line items can't change, really change numbers until the end of the year.
Right.
And that issue with like legal, by the way, may eventually rear its hope we had, sort of related, I've spent a lot of money on legal.
So is that year-to-date, like the, like December or budget year?
Nothing can change those line items until thirtieth of June.
So budget year, yeah.
Budget year.
I really appreciate you taking the time to answer our question.
You're welcome. Someday you may sit in this seat.
I don't think so.
All right, so with that in mind, um. Let's just deal with your, the, the item, the new business item of requesting the transfer. So, um, we wanna move the money back into the, the account and. You're, you, you, I mean, they must have presented it to you from, as board of selectmen's meeting, and we, we, like, the last meeting, if, if they made more money, they were gonna put it in.
Yeah.
So I don't see any problem with it, so this is, this is a motion of order, if there's a motion afloat, then we'll consider it.
The other issue is that we're talking about a capital account, so we're talking like long-term stuff as opposed to like payroll or anything like that.
Right, baseballs or.
Yeah.
You know.
Or fixing the ball field or what have you.
Well, fixing the ball field would be capital.
Right.
So does, does that mean you wanna make a motion?
Sure.
Okay, then, then tell me what it is.
Okay, I move that we approve the board of selectmen's request to transfer the recreation department excess amount of twenty-nine thousand eight hundred seventy-nine dollars. From the general fund into the recreation department capital account, and authorize them to do this at a special town meeting.
And, and by second? Second, essentially repeating this. All in favor?
Aye.
Any vote? Okay, we're good at that. Now, we got that transfer done, and that would be.
Well, I gotta ask this question.
Of course, of course.
I've, I've, I told you you could ask questions.
That was a bad idea.
That's an open permission, I realize that.
Beware of what you ask for. All right, we have a, a new schedule for next year somewhere here floating around, but I haven't logged it yet. Somebody see it somewhere, this is getting. You got it, Tonya? Um, and everything looks good until last, Melissa pointed out here that the, um, our November meeting for next year holds on Veterans Day, correct? So I am just going to delete this meeting and.
We need one, but.
Well, the last time this happened, we had it on the third Wednesday, which was twenty twenty. Which, we had it on the third Wednesday, yes. Oh, well, it was, it was, it was scheduled for twenty twenty, or, I'm sorry.
In twenty twenty, it was scheduled for November eighteenth, but the meeting got canceled for lack of agenda items. I looked it up.
Right, so what I'm saying is it gets in, gets into Thanksgiving area. People are traveling, people are, you know, maybe think, it's, it's complicated, so. If we need a meeting, like, like you guys need to spend money or if something urgent, urgent happens, or we need to do the. Audit or something like that, we can call a meeting and see if everybody can come. But I'd rather do that than get here and find out that only two people show up.
You're not canceling completely?
I'm just, yeah, just delete it from the schedule and, and put it as an ad hoc basis.
I'll make that a motion if you want.
Sure.
I'll bet.
Okay, that mentioned, motion made second to delete November eleventh from the schedule, because it falls on a national holiday, I guess. And other than that, do, uh, do we, uh?
Do we need to vote on?
We need to vote on accepting the rest of the schedule. Okay, can, can we hear a motion to accept the rest of the schedule, minus the deletion?
Go ahead, I got it.
Okay, we.
Yes.
Well, made to say, aye, agree, agree on the next rest of the schedule. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all in your polls. Motion is made and carried. All right. The treasurer's report, this is something that we don't really got to vote on or anything, but, um. I want everybody to have the share to see it, is there any, any question on it? I think we have had some good news in that the audit now can proceed. There was a hiccup with software, but now that's been resolved and we will. Proceeding with the audit and probably have more information. I know that Sarah started the audit early. And was making these calculations to try to have the budget prepared early. So we can get a lo, a longer look at it before we have to vote on it. And I think probably in January or February, we'll have to see something on that. So. The revenue collectors' report, I think it's pretty good. She gives us this little dashboard, but. And also the, granted, from last year to this year, we're looking pretty good. We're. We're up a percentage point almost in collections, since collected over the last year. And. We still have another collection due in January, so that, we're doing pretty good on that. The money's coming in at about a little bit better rate than it was last year at this time. Keep our fingers crossed. Uh, good with that. Now. Revenue work is reported, and now we're down to the selectmen's report, and Link has a story to tell.
My question. First of all, I'd like to introduce this gentleman right here, Dave Maylow. He is a newly elected member of your board. And I did say he'll get sworn in, and when he does, I'll do, Jeff is sworn in?
You did get sworn in. No, I start on the nineteenth, so I can't, I can't do anything.
The, um, second report. We've completed the fence project down at the park, the chain link fence at the one hundred and twenty-five feet has been completed. Um, that project is all settled. We've had, um. We've completed our roadwork in terms of the road resurfacing projects, that's all been done. The, um, we had a trouble with the over rail mower. Um, electric was a hydraulic motor that ceased the work, had to get that repaired. And, um, anyway, it says that whole, that whole machine, in terms of the mower, the mower head, all runs on hydraulics. And so it drives a motor, the motor in turn drives the, the, the drum that comes on, brush and whatever, and the motor failed. So we had to have that fixed, and the truck, the machine was down probably two, a few weeks at the most inconvenient time. Because we were hoping to get the side of the road done, um, a second time. We did it back in the spring. And we, we just partway through, machine fails, we had to put it aside for a while, and just wrapping that up now. Uh, because that can be done well into cold weather, and I, I think he probably has a lot of week left of that, so that's. Lots of other projects have been done, um, with the road crew. They're filming us out front. Um, not directly behind where I parked my truck, but almost, but there, there's a, a new sign that's been put up. It's a new old sign. There was a sign there, it's a stamped aluminum sign with the state seal on the top, and it's the story of Sterling. Tells about how Sterling got founded in the, uh, all the, way back when, in this double-sided sign with raised letters. It was in tough shape, the, 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 originally it was put up with concrete posts. They were wrapped in aluminum. And then, it, it was at the Old Town Hall, we moved down here when we moved here. And the, um, everything was, the, the posts were crumbling, so it was all taken, taken down to the shop back in the early part of the summertime. And they completely resurfaced it, they painted it, it's all, it's all completely renewed. They, new, uh, posts have been put in the ground, not concrete, thank you very much, but put down, pressure treated with, with vinyl sleeves on them. With two vinyl lighted caps on the top, so that's what you'll see out there. It's just been missing for four or five months and now it's been done. They did it as a favor to me. They knew that I was very anxious to get that put up, but my term came to an end and they did it last Friday, so, anyway, it's done. Um, I just, uh, we have, I'm gonna ask you, a, a, after this, we asked part of this report. For sixty-three thousand six hundred, five hundred dollars for that project over there. Um, we have, got a clean bill of health about the asbestos. We had some questions about the asbestos for a while. We've had two separate asbestos surveys done, and, um. Both done by Mr. Care Quality, and they give us a clean bill of health on those areas that we were concerned about, which were those five rooms I mentioned earlier. Plus the three rooms involved with the rec department. That would be the, the room eight, room nine, and the recreation office. Each one of those buildings had, each one of those rooms had a ceiling sample and came back, no asbestos detected. So that gives us the green light to go ahead with the other project, until that time we couldn't do anything. So the whole business with OSHA has pretty much been put to bed with a fine of two hundred and thirty dollars, I believe was the total figure. We are still waiting for, uh, them, being OSHA, Connecticut OSHA, to send out one of their representatives to conduct a training class. In this, how to handle asbestos for the two janitors. That would be the, the primary janitor, which is Sam McGuire, who takes care of most of the town hall. And Sheila's avoid those, the, the library, they, uh, they use, she cleans up for them. So those two people, the OSHA insisted they both go through a training course, but their training course. So until they come out and conduct the course, we're waiting, so. I'm gonna suggest to the new board of selectmen, that you get on their case a little bit, because we have a deadline of July, of January fifth to get all this done. It's the date deadline they came up with, and, but it's been a month since we've heard from them, so why they're so slow, I don't know. But anyway, that can be all worked out. And, um, basically, the issues with OSHA have been rectified, so there's no more problem with that. We're all on the same page, and, um. I'm just, don't think there's too many other things that we've been involved with, and, um, if you can think of something, please ask me, and I'll try to answer your question.
Are you gonna make that request for?
I am, I'm just waiting for the questions, if you have any. If I don't have any questions, I'm gonna move on. Okay.
I don't care.
I think things are going along quite well.
You want me to ask the questions?
Oh, one thing, we do have, we do have the contract signed with, a vendor, a, a local contractor to take care of all the snowplowing. So that's, that situation has been, that contract has been signed. We're good for a year on that. So the roads and the school are all gonna be taken care of, and that should, you know, that thing should work out just fine for that. Now, what Pete's referring to is, I'm gonna ask you to approve sixty-three thousand five hundred dollars. For the, the ceiling project and the two senior center rooms, the two clothing bank rooms. And what was the story, our room, it probably has another name now, I don't know what it is. Um, and to put, we may, put ceilings, suspended ceilings up, and to put up new lights in those ceilings. That's the, that we had two beds, we had three beds. Actually, the third bed was totally ridiculous, we had to ask for two others. We got two others, and this one is the bed we showed, so. The board of selectmen has approved it, and I'm asking you to approve it so we can go to town meeting for that.
Okay. How many square feet is that? How many square feet of whole ceiling is that? Quite a bit over there, huh?
Four times this size room, whatever this is. This is a typical classroom.
Are they gonna do a drop ceiling, like, are they gonna remove everything and then put a drop ceiling here, or are they just gonna put a drop ceiling?
They're gonna hang a drop ceiling from the ones there. What they're gonna do is they're gonna strap the ceiling that's there, especially this one, that one with burn strips, to hold it in place. Then they're gonna be hanging from it. The reason we had to go with the asbestos, the basement, or we thought we did, was because it, it appeared as though, when those ceiling tiles fell in the clothing bank room. That they were asbestos, and the assumption was they were gonna be, they were, they were, uh, asbestos.
So they're gonna leave the existing ceiling and everything that's in there, just put in a drop ceiling?
There's gonna be a drop ceiling, we have plenty of height, that's a lot, and then, basically, the, the, the lights will fit right into the ceiling, right into the drop ceiling.
And what if the damaged ceiling continues to damage and?
It's not gonna, that's why they were gonna strap it, gonna strap it every foot or sixteen inches with burn strips to keep it in place. That's, that's where this all started.
I, I think also the, the, as you were saying before, the, the reason for the water damage or the damage, it's been cured, right?
Oh, yes. Reason for the water damage was a pipe that was in the ceiling? Oh, yes. Reason for the water damage was a pipe that was in the ceiling, the pipe was a condensate line for all these, these, um, HVAC units, and it was in August, it's cold, all those units were going full tilt, and the pipe contained the water, the condensate, to drain out, and there was a joint that was loose, uh, so that's what caused the ceiling, that the water had come down through the ceiling, the tile had fallen, and everyone assumed the worst, which is understandable, the building is nineteen fifty-three, and I'll tease you to notice, see that.
Why don't I take down all the old stuff, so it's not somebody else's attic in the future, instead of taking off?
Just because we didn't think we needed to go through, I asked Kyle Collins, our, our buildings official, if that was a suitable alternative, before we do about anything about the asbestos, before they was even brought up. And he said, just take burn strips and strap that ceiling the way it is right now, hold it in place.
Just what is burn strips, I believe, underneath, yeah, that's our idea.
Yeah, just go right over them, just hold them in place. The trick is, we don't want to put the ceiling up with that stuff having a chance to fall down.
That wouldn't put too much more weight on it, like, obviously, we must do it all the time, but.
Anyway.
Twenty, twenty rooms, we said four?
Four rooms this size, and one room about a third of this size. I didn't break it down with this word.
Yeah, I can see your brain going, that's really, that is like twenty by thirties, six hundred square feet probably.
No, they're more like thirty-five by twenty-four. Anyway, that, that's the bid we accepted, so I'm asking you to approve it.
The money, it's, it's hard to get people to do stuff, period, but the bids are all mine, they're all seen mine.
This is, this is two-thirds of the price of the original bid.
Yeah.
First one, they meant almost a hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah, that's because they thought they had to get rid of asbestos, they thought.
No, not, no, 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 no. He would, he did that before we even talked about asbestos.
What's the, what's the company that we're on, I'm just curious?
Mark Finley.
Mark Finley, where's that?
It's on the field. He won't do it, he'll have a contractor going to do it.
Oh, so he's a GC?
Yeah, he, he'll just have a contractor come in and do the work.
So we're paying, okay, so that's probably, so, but he have a fee in it, I'll be paying a fee for him, I'm just curious.
No, it's just a one.
He's probably.
He's got a GC.
Okay, so we, we've gotten up, all the discussion we can get, and if there's, and there's a motion for that, would you like to hear it?
No, the motion is, go ahead, we have sixty-three five hundred.
Sixty-three five, yeah. Anyone want to second that?
I'll second it.
Motion made in second to approve the plan to spend sixty-three five hundred to fix those ceilings over there. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, fix those ceilings.
Thank you. That'll, that'll be one of the items on the next, um, town meeting, town meeting agenda.
So they got, we got a whole lot of, um.
Any, any, it is, some, somewhere back in nineteen seventeen, they made this rule that you cannot spend anything more than twenty thousand dollars without going to a town meeting, because we have a town meeting type of building.
Yeah, yeah, that's a good plan.
Right, but twenty thousand dollars doesn't buy much anymore, so.
But it feels like an awful lot of money, though.
Yeah, corruption's a lot. Right, but if you, you know, if you're doing building maintenance or stuff like that.
Yeah. Link, is he, are they thinking that we still have asbestos, if they're finding on those people through an asbestos training course?
The only rooms that they've been not asbestos, don't know asbestos detected, were those rooms. They went through the first inspection, did the entire building, so when you can't, when you don't test for asbestos specifically, they have to assume, they call either asbestos, asbestos present or presumed asbestos. So this room, all the ones in this hallway, all the ones in, then, all the ones other than those are presumed to have asbestos. So because of that, that's why they have, they want, they want this training done.
Okay.
That doesn't mean there isn't, it's just means they're covering their bases by saying presumed.
Faces is used, the word's loosely there, huh? The word bases is used kind of loosely there.
Yeah.
Okay, so, that gets us down to any other business that comes to board before the board of finance. Does anybody have anything, any issues that we should bring up? Um, I would like to give the board of finance a little, um, hopeful suggestion that if you have any ideas about, or questions about how, what kind of policies or procedures, or how to handle questions, and all that kind of stuff, you know, get them to me so that we can put together some sort of a plan to address our new, um, you know, thrust to get policies and procedures nailed down. The policies, policies will be addressing that, uh, new count as well, you know, how are we going to manage that? Setting up upper and lower limits and all that kind of stuff, so the big, all acts will be under the heading of policies and procedures. With that, is anybody offering some sort of a relief here?
Sure.
I make a motion, we.
Second.
Motion made in second.
Good day, Eric. David, congratulations.